Notice in the time is now 6:30. I'd like to commence tonight's Select Board meeting, held on Monday, October 4th, I mean, October 3rd, 2022, Walkway Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. Broadcast live on cable, Channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website. It's now 6:30. Convene the meeting in open session. We'll begin with the Pledge of the Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
There's been some severe weather events. We hold the people in Florida and in Puerto Rico in our hearts, and maybe we have a moment of silence for those folks. I'd like to accept the motion to approve the meeting minutes from Monday, September 12th, 2022, regular session and executive sessions. So moved. Hearing of first and second. Roll call vote, Carol?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That motion passes. I'll accept the motion to accept Monday, September 19th, 2022, regular session meeting minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second. Roll call vote, Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on that as well. That motion passes also. Moving on to appointments and hearings, we'll begin with the first line item, public comment. We only have three going in the order as signed up. Mr. Ken Dobrowski? If you could please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Going to start before Wayne gets the clicker.
Yeah. Ken Dobrowski, Three Gray Field Landing. Basically, tonight I want to follow up on an email I sent you guys beginning of last week, Monday, Tuesday. Basically, I was looking to see when we were going. It relates to Article 26 here from the May 2nd Town Meeting. I'll just read it short. "To see if the town will vote to instruct the Select Board to address immediately the growing burden of onerous property tax increases on the town's low and moderate income property owners. This action should be completed in ample time to report to the citizenry prior to the next public hearing on the town's tax classification. Explanation of value of the homes in Mashpee have risen immensely in recent years. Those increases have in turn brought about large increases in property taxes to town less financially fortunate. Property owners are feeling the financial squeeze. Other towns facing the same problem have found a variety of solutions. The Mashpee Select Board should set to work immediately to find," emphasis added, "to find solutions to this problem. The Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 26 by vote of 5-0." Unanimous. When does that ever happen? So anyway, basically, my email was just wondering, yeah, I looked at the calendar and the, what is it called, the classification meeting? That was on November 29th, I think, last year? So basically, if you look at this year's calendar, you guys are probably going to push that to the first one in December. So I think that's December 4th, if I remember correctly. So that gives you only three meetings to have this public review, comment kind of presentation thing. And I wrote you an email a while back saying that, look, you know, you don't want to have these discussions, these public hearing discussions, in the meeting where you have to do, you know, vote on the whatever it is you're voting on, you know, take action. It's like, you know, you go through this thing, and you're evaluating it with a gun to your head. I mean, that's going to lead to a suboptimal decision. So basically, if somebody could just get back to me, let me know if you're going to do this thing. I mean, if you're not going to do it, you're not going to do it. Just tell me that. Or if you are going to do it, there's only, you know, you've got three choices, one, two, three. It's not complex. One thing? Ooh, I've got a minute. I'm going to do it. Okay, I shared this with Mr. Cotton. This was something I put together. When, this is analysis, my analysis based on the assessor database that's available online. So basically, you know, the numbers, I think, are, you know, I had to make some simplifying assumptions, and, you know, I used the guidance in the DOR website on how to implement the residential tax credit. And like I said, I did make some simplifying assumptions here. It is this floor thing that I really didn't deal with. But anyway, I think, you know, the numbers here are, I would say it's like an 80% solution. I mean, it's probably within, like I said, plus or minus 20%. But basically, but I think, this is the way I think you've got to look at it, okay? You've got to look at it. It's really simple. It's resident population, non-resident population, segmented by quartile. You need, you can't just do it in aggregate. Can I get a little more time? Okay. So you can't just look at it in aggregate. You've got to segment it by quartile, because that's where you're going to see the impact on the various populations within those groups. And if you could see, take a look at the average assessments here, you can see there's a big variance in both groups on these various assessments. So again, this will show you who's impacted and by how much. And again, along demographics as well as resident, non-resident. So I think you really have to look at it that way. And what you can do is, you know, this model, again, I did this in Excel in like an hour. So I mean, it's not complex. And the other thing, you're going to look, I think you should be looking at various exemption percentages. So again, do the analysis along those slugs, okay? Do it at 25, do it at 35, do it at 15. I mean, pick whichever ones you want. But again, it should, you know, you should be able to create a model where you just plop the exception in, and it gives you the answer. Because again, the basis is the same. Once you've worked it through, and you get all the, you know, the 10%, some of the trusts and all that other kind of stuff. I did go through it, and I got, I feel for the assessor. It's not easy, so.
We appreciate your comments.
All right. I'm over my time. Thanks.
Thank you.
If you've got any questions on this, I mean, you've got my email and my phone number, I'll take you through it.
Will do. Thank you. Next on the list is Michaela Colombo. Good evening.
Michaela Wyman Colombo, Meadowbrook Road. For full disclosure, I'm a candidate for Select Board, but I'm speaking as a resident. Over the past couple of months, I've talked to and listened to hundreds and hundreds of Mashpee residents. I've done that at their doors, on the phone, outside of Stop &amp; Shop, and at various locations. Regardless of their demographic characteristics, and regardless of where they live, the residents I've talked to and listened to are overwhelmingly concerned about cleaning our waters with urgency. The residents know that our ponds, our rivers, and our estuaries are all in danger. As Mashpee residents, we know that our waters are our lifeblood. Additionally, we know our waters drive our economy. As a town, I know we've worked hard to restore cranberry bogs to wetlands, implemented aquaculture, and have addressed storm runoff in several areas. I'm so glad we'll be breaking ground on a wastewater treatment plant and a collection system very, very soon, and I know to make a difference. It's a critical, critical step, and yet it's just part of the solution. We really have to put in additional systems to eliminate contamination from storm runoff, maintain Mashpee's environmentally sensitive land, explore the use of D-Nite systems in areas that aren't ever going to be sewered, and continue to employ remedies such as aquaculture and wetland restorations. Right now, our groundwater is saturated with nitrogen. And until we address this problem, we cannot continue to overdevelop in ways that continue to put more nitrogen into the ground. It just doesn't work. I would ask the Select Board to put water quality issues and nitrogen pollution as an ongoing agenda item, so that we start to solve this problem with real urgency, the urgency that it requires. I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list, we have our last public comment, Greg McKelvey.
Good evening, folks. Greg McKelvey, Levin Menipsha Road in Mashpee. For full disclosure, a member of the Finance Committee and also a candidate for the Select Board, which election is tomorrow from 7:00 to 5:00 at the Quasnet School. My comments are, as a private citizen as well, over the last two months, I have talked to hundreds of people from Stop &amp; Shop to Roach Brothers and the Post Office for different folks. And people are concerned about the water quality, and they appreciate the fact that the town is moving as expeditiously as possible by putting in the sewer system, by spending money, the $54 million sewer project that they put in there. They're grateful that that's happening. They see the town's moving forward and working to that thing. And I think that as you do that, another thing that I've heard is that they're concerned about their financial impact of that. How does that affect long-term taxes? How does it affect long-term spending? And how do you balance spending with this project? That's a real concern. Thank goodness we have a great financial team with the treasurer and the assessor and the finance director to help us do that over the years. I'm hoping that we can continue to move forward as fast as we can with a cautious eye on the finances, so the town is not in any type of jeopardy as it goes forward. And I think people are grateful that you're doing something and have been doing something, and they see that. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Moving on, discussion and approval of the following applications. Special Event Season of Illumination hosted by the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce. I did not ask anyone to come in. This is an annual event, so I'd accept the motion to approve unless someone feels compelled to speak on his behalf.
I'm liaison to the chamber, and they're doing everything as same as last year.
Okay.
So I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Hearing of first and second. Roll call vote? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Four yeses, that motion's approved. Moving on, we have the temporary sign permit for the annual Psychic Fair, Mashpee Boosters Club. This is another one that is an annual event. I didn't ask anyone to come in and speak on his behalf. If anyone feels compelled to, we'll hear those comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hearing of first and second. Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Yes. And I'm a yes. That motion's unanimous and is approved. This brings us to a next item, presented by our DPW Director, Catherine Moran, discussion and approval of the following, award of contracts for road salt, pre-salt, and pretreated salt and agricultural byproduct as a first matter.
Good evening.
Welcome.
So this is a request to award contract for our annual snow and ice products. This is a collective bid that we do with Plymouth and Barnstable Counties. The memo before you outlines the low bidders for the Town of Mashpee. There is one new product that I added this year, the pretreated salt. Generally, we treat the salt ourselves, but it's nice to have the option when there's a difficulty with getting material and/or time before a storm to order the salt already treated.
And I see there's a 29% increase?
Yes.
On one of them.
Yeah, one of them. As everything has gone up.
Is this consistent, the increase? Is it consistent with the past few years, or is this?
So the increase this year for the salt is 13% increase. The 29% is just with the agricultural byproduct. In most years, you do see an increase. This is slightly higher than in the past, which I'm sure has to do a lot with the delivery costs. This product is all delivered to the town.
And I forget, did we deplete the, what we had for last year?
I'm sorry?
Did we deplete what we ordered for last year?
No. So just because end of the season, we do tend to try to keep our sheds relatively full until, you know, sometime in March. So we do have one full shed at the time. At this time, one shed is empty.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
No, I, you know, it is what it is. It's about a bid, so. Motion to approve the bids to purchase salt and agricultural byproducts, safe melt through a regional bid with the counties of Barnstable and Plymouth.
Hearing of first and second. Roll call vote, Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Fiscal Year 2023 Snowplow Contract Rates?
Right. So it's been a few years since we've increased the rates in light of the increase in fuel costs over this past year, as well as trying to remain competitive and retain contractors, plow drivers. I am proposing an increase for vehicles and equipment of $15 per hour and an additional $5 per hour incentive for contractors to return to Mashpee. So drivers that plowed with us this past year, if they come back, they would get an additional $5 per hour.
Has there been many complaints about the existing rates?
Not complaints per se, but we generally, this time of year, will do a comparison to our surrounding communities to make sure that we are staying competitive, and I can say that everyone is increasing their rates. We all are in need of contractors. I'm not sure of any municipality that's able to provide the services without hiring contractors. And what we've found is that they don't necessarily go to another municipality, they go to the private sector. So we're competing not only with, you know, the surrounding towns, we're also competing with, you know, just, you know, plowing parking lots or driveways where they can charge a lot more per, I guess, visit to a plow driveway than what they would get on an hourly rate for the town.
Now, the other question I have is, you know, typically you only bring on 20 contractors. How many do you have typically have apply for the proposal?
The last, the last several years, we've, we've pretty much hired anyone who has applied to the town. When I first started working for the town, we, I think we had close to 20 contractors. Now, I think this past year, we were closer to 10. So it's, it's like I said, we are losing a lot of the contractors. We used to have, you know, landscaping companies that would give us multiple trucks for the season. They don't work for us anymore. They all are doing private jobs now.
Anyone else have comments, concerns?
No.
I'd accept the motion to approve the Fiscal Year 23 Snowplow Contract Rates as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second. Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well.
Thank you very much.
That motion's unanimous.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thanks.
Moving on, we have Mr. Brian Howes to present the Water Quality Presentation from UMass Dartmouth. Hello, good evening.
How are you doing today? I'm fine.
That's a big how-do-you-do hint in the room. I didn't see you right away.
You know, I mean.
Welcome back.
Yes, that's why I'm so relaxed, all right. I do want to acknowledge before I start, though, that Don McDonald is stepping down as running the program after this year. He's done it for forever, and he's done a really good job, and he's kept everything going, and he's kept all the people in line. And it's, he will be taken, his place will be taken to the extent it can ever be taken by Ashley Fisher, who, believe it or not, wanted it, which to me is really, you guys hire the right people in town, right? So, and she'll be taken. We've worked with her for years already on other projects, and we're working with her on the Mashpee Wake Bay Project as well. So it's a seamless transition, but it is a big change. All right. So I'm just here to talk, as usual, about summer 2021, but I'm actually not going to. You guys have listened to this over and over again. I'm going to give you a very brief overview. It's, I think there's only like 10 or 11 substantive slides, and now we have enough data that we can start really looking at, you don't have to look at this stuff, we can start doing three-year averages, and it's easier to look at, and it's much more robust data for making decisions now, finally. Okay, so I'll just start with the normal, usual stuff, everybody knows, but for those out in TV land, the major problem in the oceans globally, and all, the Baltic Sea's a classic example, Tampa Bay, where they just had an hurricane, has a huge, huge vacation problem from too much nitrogen, Loning Buzzards Bay has it. Everybody has this now because people since 1950s have bought land near the water. So even though in our region, the population hasn't increased overall, like in the Buzzards Bay waters, it didn't increase very much since the 50s. Maybe it went up like 1.5 times. What happened when people moved out of the city in urban areas and all around the coast? And then back in the 1950s, there's almost nobody living on the little, all those 28 embayments in Buzzards Bay. 1950, Pompanesset Bay did not have dense population, Wacoit Bay did not have dense population. So what's really happened is, is that all the people that move here now first take up the spaces right at the shoreline, and then back, and then back, and then back, and now we're filling up all those spaces, and that is what's causing the problem. Because the first house is in, the septic system's long ago reached the bay, and the second tier in, long ago reached the bay, and on and on and on, and we just keep adding more nitrogen now. The, this nitrogen enrichment is, this program has documented that it is causing the impairment to Wacoit and Pompanesset Bays. It's not anything else. It is too much nitrogen relative to the amount of water that's in the bay and how quickly it turns over. The only way that you can manage nitrogen, the obvious one, is why you control the sources, and that's what you guys have been working and trying to do with this $54 million treatment plant. That's, that's a source reduction. There's other things that have happened too as well. The Shellfish Program has reduced nitrogen in the bays. Sometimes cranberry bog restoration was mentioned, that those are, all of those different tools. But in Mashpee, unfortunately, especially for the Mashpee-Pompanesset Bay, it's, there's just too much watershed to attack it without sewer. There has to be some searing and a fair amount of searing, okay? And you can also, if you can increase the title exchange, which pretty much is, I think we're sort of exhausted that, except in maybe one or two tributaries, and, and you can build in things, like I said, like cranberry bog conversion to wetlands will remove nitrogen before it gets from the watershed into the bay. If it doesn't get to the bay, we don't care. So, so there are other tools that will remove nitrogen. If Santuit Pond, every is restored, that may actually increase its nitrogen removal too. So, but right now, it's a mess. But not, this is saltwater night. You can have fresh water night anytime you want, but tonight's saltwater, right? All right, so the goals of the program are to assess what's going on now, and that's why we do it each year, because things are variable, and they do change from year to year. And 2021, I'll just tell you, you're not going to see much in the data, but 2021 was sort of a mild summer for nutrients, which means that things were just horrible. They weren't extremely horrible. So the condition of the bay is just bad all over, but, so when you look at a year and say, hey, that's a little bit better, yeah, but it doesn't mean anything. Because the next year, it's going to be back where it was. And if you look at the 10 years of data, it's just pretty much flat or declining. That's what we get. Look at short-term changes, which is what we do, because we do year to year, and then the most important thing is going to come online once searing starts and some of these other things start. We have looked at the effectiveness of, of the bi-valve aquaculture, you know, with oysters and co-hogs, in that we did see effects on the water quality, positive effects, and that has to be continued all the time before you can see the effects, right? I mean, if you stop doing it, then you stop getting the effect. The searing is going to be the big one. We will, we will be looking at changes in the bay and tracking that very closely. Oh, and the good news is, we have seen in other systems that when you do that type of effect, you do get improvement. And it starts occurring relatively quickly, okay? Because you're going to be picking up stuff that, from the front couple tiers as well as the back tiers. So we should start seeing, seeing positive effects, as we have seen in other areas that we have tracked both shifts in, in treatment plant quality, like in West Falmouth, or septic system type removals. So it can happen, and it will happen here, but it has to start. So as usual, we did 18 stations throughout, all the way up in Wacoit, in the bay, we did offshore station, all up in the river system, Charles River system, the main bay, up into Quasnet, Yehu, and Hamlin Pond systems. So we cover the whole bay. We do the same thing in Pompanesset, it's the whole bay. It's 14 stations, it's like a slightly smaller system, less diverse, and we do four sampling events each summer. In the beginning, we did like many more than that, eight, 10, but after you've done it for a while, the costs, it's not worth doing more than four, so we cut it way back. And with four, we've been able to capture all the major effects that you want to see. And maybe, you know, if you get to Phase 2 or so of the searing, you might increase a couple if you start seeing something positive, because everybody wants a little more data that it's positive. But right now, I do not recommend any increase in the program. Okay, so here's the first real data. Let me put this on, on slideshow. My mistake for not doing that, I apologize. Okay, so that's a little bigger. So what we get here, is this laser pointer? Oh, yeah, these don't show up on, oh, it does. So the real thing here that's distressing is this red dot is the regulatory.
Put it on the back screen.
Reg, how about this?
Yeah.
The, the lower line here is the regulatory threshold for restoration of the main basin of Wacoit Bay. Quasnet River has, since Quasnet River never had eelgrass that we can find, and here, this is Quasnet River, that there's a higher threshold. In other words, you're allowed to have more in there because there was no eelgrass to restore. You can't restore something that was never there. So that's why you're allowed to put more in there. But if you look at Quasnet, it's, it's in some cases two and three times higher than the threshold. Threshold's .5, so this is over 1.5 in the upper part. Even here now, rightly, in the last six years, it's been almost 1.5 in the mid. So it's getting worse as it, and moving down. And what you'll see is, as it, as it moves down, now we're starting to get this ramping up in the lowest portion. So basically, the bad is moving this way, not in that one, in this one. So everything, not in that one either, sorry, in this one. So it's just getting, at first, it was the head that was, was bad, variable bit bad. The mid then has now, for six years, has been very bad, and now the low is getting really bad. It's over the limit, so it's impaired, but I will tell you, Quasnet River is the poster child for the worst water quality, worst habitat quality in Mashpee, and in fact, probably in most of the South Shore of the Cape. All right, it's just been very heavily impaired, and that's just the way it is. We tried to grow oysters in there a few years ago as a test case to see if you could do that, and you couldn't grow them in the, in the head or the mid region. You could only grow them in the lower, the salinity and the physiology of the oysters would not, they just would not grow. They didn't die, but they didn't grow. And that's not good. The thing that is somewhat distressing, as you'll see in a second, is in here, is that the great river, little river, but really not just, just the ponds of Yehu Pond and Hamlin Pond are starting to, to get a little worse, all right? This is just nitrogen, but if you look at all the parameters together, they're starting to get a little worse. And, and it's, it makes sense, as you'll see in a second, I'll show you why, but it's, it's disturbing. Most of the rest of the bay is just, I mean, if you're impaired, you're impaired. Once you get over .7 on this scale here, you're severely degraded. You can't get more severely degraded than severely degraded. It's like if you're dead, you're dead. It is literally like that. You have wiped out most of the animals and fish in the summer. It doesn't mean in the winter, they can't come back in, a little bit, fish especially, because they move around a lot, but you've taken away their food. So you have to get something to happen. you have to get something to happen before they can come back into, and grow. They can live, but they can't grow. So it, it's just not a happy story. There's no place in Wacoet Bay, either the sub, the tributaries, or the basins, or any place in that bay, that is healthy. And in fact, right now, most of it is, is, well, all of it is, is impaired. But there's just a little bit down in the Yell River lower here. It's, it's right at the threshold, so it's, it's moderately impaired. But that's it. It's a tiny little area right near the inlet. It's just inside the inlet over on that side. And the rest of the bay is pretty bad, except again, the lowest part in Wacoet Bay, right down near the inlet, that's always gonna be good. That, you will always have a little bit of good water quality right near the inlets, because Nantucket Sound, Vineyard Sound are, is still in high quality. But it's a tiny little area. And, and even that's getting small. Because really, if you look at Wacoet Bay here, and Wacoet Bay here, it's up, banging up against that impairment zone. And it's over in some cases. So even in that situation, it's impaired, which is not typical. All right, we looked at blooms, we're worried about blooms. And what you see is, is that this red line down here is what the tidal water coming in from the sound is, is as phytoplankton biomass blooms, chlorophyll. And as you can see, in almost all cases, you have very high chlorophyll over that. And if you look in Quashnet, the 10, which is right about here, about 10, is impaired. It's eutrophic. And this goes up almost to 100. So it's just, as I said, Quashnet's in really bad shape. But, you know, Charles River's not doing great either. And either is Yell River upper, mid now, and upper. You look in the early days, not so bad. It's, you're seeing spikes now in areas way up that you didn't, you saw no spikes in mid Quashnet. And now you got the last six years, huge amounts. And you see it over here in Wacoet Bay upper, here. Where is it? Wacoet Bay upper, there it is. You see they're, they're high, but they're only around 10. And then now the last six years, which is, this is the three year, three years, and this is in 19, 1920, 21, this is 1920, 21, the three years prior to that, sorry. And 16 to 18. And you can see that these are bumped up now. And, and those are high numbers for, for what you want. So it used to be that Wacoet Bay, the main basin, had macroalgae in it, but there were areas that you could shellfishing and, and things like that. Now we're starting to get worried about some of that. Although, shellfish can survive some of this stuff, because they clam up. They just clam up and wait out.
Is there, is there a reason why the anomaly for the 16 to 18, the green?
Oh, in that period, in, in the 16, 18, the reason for the big, the big spikes, that was when we had a cochlea didium bloom, a couple of years of that. It's a, it's a rust tide. It's a, it's a hazardous algal bloom, harmful algal bloom, rather. And we had a couple of years, it hadn't occurred before, just came in, it'll hit for a year or two, it'll go away, and then we just wait to see when it comes back. And when it did, it hit a whole bunch of bestures. Three bays was really bad, our bays were bad, there were a couple, but Buzzer's Bay was bad. And it's, it's, the reason it's a harmful algal bloom is, in some cases, it can cause starvation to shellfish. But it didn't in this case. So.
One question I have is, how, does, does your methodology factor in normal rainfall seasons?
Yeah, if we get a really weird rainfall season, we will look at it. And we know for a fact that, that when we have, if we had like a hurricane, then we would see a very different, the next, if it can't happen mid-season or even in early August, we would see it in the water quality, and we would flag that. But none of these, none of these were on rainy days. None of these were even after major rainstorms for, it was a great year. In fact, it was sunny every day, all right. But maybe, did that answer your question?
Well, I, I guess, the reason for my question is, if, if the nitrogen and stuff is transported by rainfall, and that's the mechanism of transporting it, then, you know, if we're in a long-term drought, are normal rain seasons gonna compound these figures?
What we thought, what we thought actually was, the long-term drought lowers groundwater tables, and we track those. We do, look at those. Whenever we do this, we look at those, for the lake studies and for the estuaries. And they were pretty low there for a while. And that will cut down on the nutrient flux to the bay if it's a short-term drought, you know. So it's not steady state, you know. It was up here and then it dropped pretty quick, and then it'll come back up. Well, in that period, when it dropped pretty quick, then you do get a diminution in the load to the bay, and you get a good year. And we think that may have been why 21 was, was as good as it was.
It'll be interesting to see what next August, where we didn't have the rainfall this year. So it'll be interesting to see if, like what you're saying, is the rainfall counting for flowing all that to the water?
But the, the beauty of the methodology is, is that you do it, and you do it like you guys are doing it. And at the end, you've captured high rain, low rain, high groundwater, low groundwater, windy days, cloudy days, everything days. So when you look across a period of three to six years, I mean, you've hit everything. Remember, six years would be 24 dates in the summer sample. So that, you just, it averages that out. And then you can make a, a statement and a decision where you have some certainty about what you're doing, and you're not shooting in the dark, you know. So, but, yeah, that doesn't say 16 to 16, it should say 16 to 18, obviously. All right. What happened? Here we go. All right. Now, the reason, though, that we're seeing this, if you look over here, in this region over in here, in the red circle, right, this is loading, this is a model that shows nitrogen distribution in the bay, which is, which is verified to the water quality program, all right. So it's not just a model, it is actually, though, it's just a nice way to show the actual data, okay? And what you see is, I mean, in 2010, there was loading up here, but it was green, so it was down less, you know, .8, whatever. And then, and you see Charles Earth, but then you look over and now, when it's built out, this isn't today, but built out, you see the Quashnet goes really bad. And that's what we're seeing. Well, Quashnet is getting worse and worse. Buildout is, was based on like a 20-year buildout, which would be halfway there, kind of thing. Although I'd have to check with a, with a town planner to make sure what it is today. We do updates to find out what it really is today. But the projection is that we should be about half there. And you can see all this is getting darker and darker. And the farther away it gets from blue, the more nitrogen loaded it is. And that's what you can expect sorta to happen. It's not gonna get any better until you start cutting down on the loads, because it's, buildout's happened. We can't stop it. It's gonna happen unless we wanna buy everybody's property. The only thing we can do is allow it to happen in a reasonable fashion, and in a manner that doesn't contribute nitrogen. And the, right now, the only tool we really have for these is, is sewer and some of these other things, like shellfish, as I said. So these are one-year trends. This is 19, 20, 21, it's three separate things. This is an index that is, covers, uses all our data. So it's chlorophyll, oxygen, water clarity, total nitrogen, chlorophyll, you know, algal biomass. All the things are combined. It's a common health index that was developed for Buzzer's Bay when I was working there. And red means really pretty bad. I mean, it's, you know, you're getting maybe a 30 out of 100, you know. Nobody's gonna pass you for that. There are no blue, there should be blue in here, there's virtually no blue. There's a tiny, tiny little half-blue one there. But, but that's only in 21. In the previous years, no. And what you see is, is all these upper tributaries are showing really poor water quality. And unfortunately, Hamlet-Yehu system is starting to really degrade as well. You're seeing, seeing some reds and yellows and, red yellows and reds in there now, where we didn't used to see them. The upper bay is, is really bad. And it's just, even the Seapit River is not doing very good. So it's just, you know, we gotta do something. It is time to be showing you guys improvements and waving the flag that, look at what we did. And we know what to do. So, the main thing is, whenever anybody talks about stuff, they say, well, water quality where I am is fine. You ask them where they are. Because if they happen to live right there, then yeah, maybe the water quality's not so bad, right? But if they happen to live, eh, eh, maybe like right here, even just lower part of the Charles, it's really crummy. And I, personally, I go out there and I know that this, these match what you would see. As somebody who cares about the environment, you would look and say, eh, it's not very good. And if you're fishing, digging, going in the sediments, looking for clamps, eh, not so good. We still have shellfish in here, though, because they're sort of the last to go. All right. Okay. And then I'm not gonna go through this other, then say that if you look over in this column here, this one, right here, it's, things are getting worse, they're not changing. But when it says not changing, it's severely degraded, not changing. That's, doesn't mean it's good. It means that it's severely degraded and it hasn't gotten any better. And the, the significantly impaired is slightly better than severely degraded. And that's unchanging. So, and then worst part was, lower, you know, river looks like it's declining. And it was one of the, it's like the best part in the bay almost right now. And the lower main basin of Wacoet Bay is moderately impaired, but it's declining. So the few patches that we talked about are getting worse, which is what you'd expect, because the water flows from the upland headwaters to the sea. And so with it, it carries all the bad stuff with it. All right, Poppy. All right, I have an affinity for Papaneset, so this is nice. Mashpee River is so far above its limits, it's not, we're talking about, all the way down to the mouth now, though, by the way. It's early days when we first started, it's the long-term average. Originally, it was down here. It was much lower. Now it's gone way up. And, and you see these blue bars on the long-term, like the MEP average, from way back when, 97 through like 2006. So that's a big number. But it's, see how low it is relative to these numbers that follow since 2010 up to present. So it's, it's gone, it jumped up. And this was, because that's a long-term average, it stopped in '06. And this is an average that starts in, in 10 to 12. And, and that's pretty much the case all the way along. There's not much to say here. It's pretty much all the same and bad. But again, we see this thing where the, the upper Mashpee River now is jumping up and staying up over a six-year period. Lower part's not so bad. 16, 18 was bad. It's a little bit bounced back. This is about the same. We had that one bad year here. But if you look over to Pinquisset, Pinquisset, the nitrogen is high, and it actually has, back to where it was, high. But unfortunately, what's happened is, is that the, we're starting to now see like blooms. You see this, there's your, there's that cochlea didium bloom there, all these green ones. And then it returned back down again, because the nitrogen really, other than in upper Mashpee River, it's been relatively stable. And we get, now we're getting the blooms because of what you peoples asked, well, what about rain? What about, how very sunny years? Some years we have sun every day in the summer, and some years we don't. We have a lot of clouds. That makes a difference. Cloudy summers, we will get low dissolved oxygen and all sorts of other problems. Sunny summers, we, at least we keep the oxygen up usually. So, you know, this is the variation. This is why you can't do one year. And especially once you build stuff and you start trying to track it, you're still gonna have this inherent variation on top of it that you're gonna have to look at. But again, 10, as I said, was, is the eutrophic threshold. So that's the difference between severely, significantly impaired, and moderately impaired, and then below this red line, unimpaired or healthy. So, basically, you can't look at this graph. And the reason I didn't show 50,000 graphs , is you look at this and it says, oh god, they're way over. And that's all you need to know. That's the take-home message. Same thing with the three years. Pinquisset's been really suffering in these three years now. I'm afraid it's gonna go, just stay south. But the rest of the bay, there's, there's nothing that's blue. Everything is, you get a half-blue one here and a half-blue one there. That's because of water. Now, with the island that's formed here, Low Town Island formed here, we're starting to change some of the circulation of the bay with that. And so we think we might be getting a little flow up in this direction, and not just in this direction. You know, flow typically was this way through here and out there. But in any case, we're just not seeing anything good. Mashpee River's bad, all the way from the head down to the mouth. And we're seeing more and more, what you don't see on this map, but we take into account, is more and more of those macroalgal accumulations. The macroalgae in this bay is reaching the point where it's starting to break the surface. From the bottom, the whole water column, other than maybe the top this much during low tide is, is macroalgae. And that's just destroying the bentos and everything else. And plus, it's a nuisance for people. People don't like it. So they're starting to get As we said before, there's no high-quality areas. There's no yell grass left in the bay. In the bentocavitat, throughout most of the bay, not the whole bay, is, is impaired. But again, there's still shellfish in this bay, too. Same thing, impaired, impaired, severely degraded, significantly degraded, blah, blah, blah. We had a change in Pinquisset. We ranked it now to significantly impaired from, from what it was before. Now it's declining. And that's sort of where we are right now. So it's, no good news. Although, you can always say that, well, jeez, if it's this bad, then when we do something, it's gonna get a really big bang for our buck. So that's a plus. We can sell that. So, but you can see your same thing. This is buildout, this is not buildout, all right? This is levels in '08, this is a buildout. And what you see is, it's just gonna get, the Mashpee River's gonna get worse and worse and worse and worse. And these are not, red means bad. This is so high nitrogen that, that when we, we did new draft standards for the Estorin, state standards for water quality, and, and if it was a number above .7, it would, it was, that's like everything severely degraded. And you see that red on this stops at like 1.1 or something like that. So you're way over where you should be. And it's, Sheestring Bay is going to become even worse than it is, and it's really bad now. That does have algae all the way to the surface in the summer, just floating mats of algae now. And I worry about, since I live in this town, I worry about tax base with it. You can charge people for a water view, but they have to be able to see the water. And in parts of Sheestring, you don't see the water in the summer. Rest of the bay, okay. From the top, it looks great. All right, so the overall findings are the impairments are increasing or staying the same, but they're not getting better. So overall, the bays are getting worse, just like you'd expect, because it's been a long-term program, and it's been development occurred over a long time, very gradually. You'd never see it with a one-year, two-year, three-year sampling. But with this type of sampling, when we go way back, we can see the changes. And we're seeing a gradual decline in the lower basins, the upper tributary basins are still significantly impaired, as you'd expect, because we haven't done anything. And frequency and magnitude of phytoplankton blooms are increasing, but you can't count it every year to happen. But I will tell you that the macroalgal accumulations are increasing. And the, it's just that we have clear evidence that there's these declines, and it's due to nitrogen. From all the results we've taken, we know we can, we can detect, when, when an action is undertaken, we know we can see it in the water quality. We know what works and what doesn't. So that's a good thing, because going forward, we're gonna have to be able to document the positive changes that go on for the town to get credit, to get these things off, unlisted. We gotta get them off the impaired waters list. The only way you can do that is to show that now they're not impaired. And by having this baseline, you can easily do that. You don't have to do a special big study to do it. You just do what you're doing and you can prove it. And, you know, we're hoping that we'll, we'll be able to track the Phase 1 CWMP pretty soon. And then I, I do have, that's it. I, I do wanna say, though, that the, the town staff, the Wampanoag tribe, and the private citizens that have taken part in this, have been, year after year, they go out, they do it, they bring boats, they do their own stuff. You know, we have two SMass field teams as well, with their families. So it's a, one of the scientists with their family that does it as well. It's a true team, community effort. And I just wanna thank the town and the people out there for this.
So, one question I have is, with freshwater, I know we're focused on the nitrogen here at the base, but in, you know, the, the state is hyper-focused on the nitrogen. But with the freshwater being impaired to the point where they are, where you're seeing the algae blooms and things in June, in lakes like Mashpee-Wakeby, the nitrogen becomes another stressor for that freshwater body.
It's really the, it's really the phosphorus in those, in systems, in those freshwater, in that, in those specific freshwater systems on the Cape. It is a rare thing for nitrogen to be the major stressor. They can get a little bit. But really what happens is, is freshwater lakes... They can get a little bit, but really what happens is those freshwater lakes remove a lot of nitrogen as it passes through them, and it never gets out. It, the cycling nitrogen within the lakes removes typically about fifty percent of the nitrogen that enters the lake.
That's my concern, when they're healthy.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you kill everything.
Do they still get rid of the nitrogen?
Well, we're tracking that, I mean, usually it, they, they, even a really crummy pond will, will take out fifty, sixty percent of the nitrogen. Even, and it's really disgusting, it can even take out a little more. The problem is, is you've lost that whole resource. By the time it gets to that level, you have lost the resource. You, you no longer, you can't swim in it, you can't, you, nobody wants to boat in it, you can't fish in it. So that's the real problem, and what we think is happening, and we've done this, we've done about ten or twelve full restorations on the Cape already, my team has, uh, for phosphorus. And, um, and, and another one's going to happen pretty soon in Barstool, I think, this coming year. But what seems to have happened is that in the early days, people come and they build their cottage next to the shore, right? And I grew up on a cottage in Pembroke near, in the summers on a lake, so I'm guilty. And what happened, though, is that our soils do not allow the phosphorus that comes out of a leach field, septic system leach field, really to make it very far, it sticks on the sediments because of the iron, so comes out of the leach field and it sticks. But then you add more, and it goes, and this next slug gets a little further, and the next slug gets a little further. Eventually you'll get to the bay, but it takes a long time, it could take thirty, forty years. And for, to get enough there. The problem is, is when we track the development on the Cape, it's been thirty, forty years. So it's recently, all these last ten years, all these new blooms that we're seeing, we're starting to track back to, is this that we've finally just exhausted the aquifer between enough septic systems and the lake that they're built on, see what I mean? So that's why nothing happened for so many years, and then now we're starting to see it. Because the first one hits, that's not going to be enough to do anything, the second one hits, not going to be, see? But eventually enough hit, and, and everyone, it's going to take thirty, forty years, say. And so then you've finally reached enough phosphorus going into the pond to have a big effect. That's not the only problem, there's other problems, the ba, the ponds can have their own internal phosphorus really, but basically it all comes from outside of it. At some point it came from outside and it got into the pond. And whether it just is enough comes in every year to cause the blooms, or whether you're recycling what's already in the pond and that causes the blooms, doesn't matter, it all came from outside. And in those cases, there's some things that are online to be able to fix those. There's short-term fixes and long-term fixes, so if you had a really bad pond, you really had to fix it right away, you could fix it for ten, fifteen years with different types of treatments, or while you're worrying about your stopping the source. And there are now some, some septic systems that will take out phosphorus that are pilot, though they're not, they're still experimental, that are coming in the state of Massachusetts, I think there's three of them. And then at some point in the near future, those may become a tool that Mashpee and other towns could use. We're not using them yet because it would be use at your own risk kind of thing, because they're still pilot.
Does your data reflect, um, because I suspect some of the problem is that we, we're having more year-round residents move to the Cape since people can work remotely and things? So, you know, from twenty twenty forward, is your data showing the effects of that year-round residency? You know, a lot of our water had time to heal.
Pardon me.
When we were seasonal, um, but now I think your numbers are probably.
No, we will have to at some point go back and revisit that, but yeah, all the numbers we did looked at year-round versus seasonal housing, and yes, there's a difference. It's not as big a difference as you'd think, because frequently, the summer homes have more people in them for the summer, and like nobody in the winter. And the year-round houses have less people in them, but for the whole year, so there's more coming out of them, but it's not like, you know, double or triple or something, it's not a simple math calculation. And, uh, what we have done for all our housing work is we look at the actual, uh, well, you know, the pump meter data, the water meter data, and that's how we generate how much wastewater. So if a house was seasonal, we get the water use goes up, or down rather, in the winter. You have a lot of people there, you have a Super Bowl party, the water use goes up, you know, that kind of thing. So that is counted, counted in the Estaran, Estaran stuff. But now when we do the lake stuff, it's a more detailed watershed analysis, because we're only worried about homes in a certain distance from the lake, let's say a hundred years.
And when you do the sampling, do you test for various chemicals that might be indicators of, um, uh, stormwater contributing?
We're mainly, we're mainly interested in, in, if we're doing a lake study, we're mainly interested in phosphorus, although we do the nitrogen series, too, because we're interested in where the water goes from the lake, you know, into the estuary, so we do both. But we don't, we're not looking at, uh, some people that we, we are dealing with work on PFOS, work on contaminants of emerging concern, things like that. But pretty much, if you're finding a plume that originates at a septic tank, it's pretty clear it's septic stuff, so.
Um, so, Dr. Howes, as far as our water levels here in Mashpee, uh, where do they compare to the rest of the Cape? Do you?
I, I, I'll have to check, I don't have that on top of my head, but I mean, that we're on the, on the Cymor lens. And so we have wells around, USGS and the state has wells around to measure the elevation of that lens. And, um, I'd have to look for each thing, because remember, the lens discharges to the estuary, so we have to look somewhere up there, up gradient. Uh, that is the, and remember, the up gradient water pushes the lower gradient water in, so if that goes up and down, then the flow changes.
Okay, so, um, it, so is the number one cause of, I guess, like you said, uh, it's phosphorus for lakes?
For lakes, yeah, yeah, pretty much, I mean, everything's not perfect, but yeah.
And then salt water would be wastewater, would that be the?
Well, that would be nitrogen in waste, wherever it comes from, it could be rain, it could be wastewater. In our estuaries, most of the nitrogen's coming from wastewater, the, the, most of it. But if you look at the controllable load, and as we can't control the atmosphere, right? So if you're going to try to fix the bay, you're going to have to fix something you can actually fix. And so we look at, in that case, stormwater and wastewater, things like that. And wastewater is eighty-five percent of the fixable load, uh, because we can't control rain. So, and, and we also do analyses that have said that, that we, you have to always be careful and be really careful when you're doing this type of stuff, to make sure that you're not setting a target that can't be met. So all of these things have, we've done, um, you know, analysis to make sure that, yeah, if, if we went back to nineteen sixty, say, or nineteen sixty-five loads, yeah, the bay would be totally great, it would be healthy, it would be fantastic. So, so we, we lower the loads and see what the response in the bay. And we proved that in fact, if you put soaring in, which is one of the things we do scenario, that you actually can restore the bay, because if you can't, then there's something wrong with your analysis, right? Because the bay was good once.
To, to a statement you made earlier, you mentioned about like the seeping of leach fields, if you will?
Yeah.
Like it's over time?
Yeah, that was for phosphorus, yes, that we talked about.
So if, would you consider cesspools, if cesspools are, would have to be, if there's cesspools in Mashpee, they'd have to be fifty-plus years old? And anyone, any cesspool that's, say, within a hundred feet of water, um, I would guess that seepage could happen?
Well, for nitrogen, for nitrogen, it's, we, we've analyzed cesspools and Title V systems. Both are, are made to contaminate the groundwater, that's what they're built for. They're ba, built to get rid of the water that goes into them. And if they stop leaching that water and contaminating the groundwater, then you dig them up and you put one in that does leach the water and contam. Their, their job is to put, uh, the waste, the treated effluent into the groundwater in a manner that is protective of public health. That's a septic system or public health systems. So the idea is if they're built right, and they're at the right distances, the bacteria and pathogens in the wastewater will not get into the water body or into a well, that's pretty much what it is, and that you're, that's pretty much what they do. So, so, and for phosphorus, it's a little different in that, in that, it's the same septic system or cesspool, but the thing is, is that the bigger, this is different than nitrogen, the bigger the leaching field, the slower it takes for the phosphorus to break through to the pond, because it's a, it's the volume of, of aquifer, that, just the mass of aquifer that that plume has to go through that, that takes up the phosphorus. So if you have a little tiny little ribbon of, of, it goes through, it breaks through really quick, if it's really wide, all goes through that, then there's a lot of binding sites in there and it takes longer, but eventually it will break through if it's within, say, five hundred or a thousand feet of that. Eventually, I mean, I'm talking a hundred, you're planting arises, not twenty.
So basically what you just said is exactly what I was talking about, so cesspools.
Hey, we agree.
There's no big, long leaching field in a cesspool.
Yeah, for phosphorus, cesspools are, are a little tougher for phosphorus. I mean, not as good for phosphorus, because they, they, as you said, and I suppose is, is that the groundwater path that, that plume from a cesspool, uh, takes is going to be narrower and less, less soil than would be a leach field, which is, you know, they're huge, right? So, yeah.
It's not slowed down by a leaching field.
Well, it'll be slowed, it'll be slowed down, it just, there'll be less binding sites, maybe, you know, a tenth or fifth of the binding sites, which means that it breaks through to the, to the pond quicker. But if they're going to an estuary, they're going to get there, just pretty much the same. Nitrogen will get there to pretty much the same. I'm trying, John.
And you mentioned, uh, Quashnet River being the, the worst, right?
Which being the worst?
Quashnet.
Oh, yeah, Quashnet is just a really bad tributary, uh, system, it's, it's its own, you know, but in Wacoit. But it's, it's pretty much, I think, personally, I think it's worse than the Mashpee River, actually. Mashpee River is bigger, has more exchange, has less load, so.
Anyone else have questions?
I do, I do almost, House. The, um, I know we talked about this in the past, and to me, we, we talk about it frequently here, is the possibility of dredging, especially in the Mashpee River. I'm in there frequently, I know the muck is in the bottom, it's probably close to three feet of muck at, at some areas. And, and I, and I think you feel positively about, um, dredging. It's the problem, the problem seems to be, where do we place the spoils? And that's been the, we, we did have it, a permit at one time to move forward, and the state stepped in and said, no, you can't put it.
That's right.
Would you think that that would make more sense at this time to help the river, the streams to recover more quickly if we were allowed to dredge?
We, we looked into the, the dredging and, and, and in the Mashpee River, and you, you only could get a little bit of additional flow. It, it's pretty much doing its thing. The disposal problem was really painful, because I, I thought we had a good plan, I thought the town had a good plan. Because I worked on that project. And it was to expand the wetland area within the Mashpee River with the spoils. So basically you'd be making spoil islands with, with salt marsh and, and everything else on them. But the state, uh, that didn't, they just wouldn't go for that. They hadn't, there were too many restrictions on how close it could be to existing marsh, and of course, you really want it pretty close up, because then it, it becomes one marsh. But, uh, it just, it, it just fell through. But on the dredging thing, Mashpee River is so bad that, that you can't, if you're running double the nitrogen load, the, that concentration that you should, or triple, that means you'd have to increase the water flow like roughly, not exactly, but double or triple. And there's no way we can double the, the tidal exchange or even get a ten percent change, increase in flow in the Mashpee River. So I know that you and I have talked about this before in terms of, you know, is it worth doing, is it not? I think that that analysis, I, I listened to you last year and I thought about it, and I thought about it prior to this meeting, with the idea that, that in a case of the Mashpee River, we can't get enough flow to make a discernible difference if we dredge. So we'd spend the money and you wouldn't get a discernible effect. It would be nice if we could put in additional, build additional marsh, bring it back sort of the way it was. It once had more marsh in it, especially in the lower, uh, part of it. And, because that actually helps to clean the water, too. It also provides wildlife habitat and all this other stuff. But that's, that's going to, that's, I'll do that in my retirement.
Yes, it's just the amount of muck that's at the bottom of that river is, um,
Yeah.
It's just overwhelming, I mean, I, I've stepped in it where you go up above your knee, and, and it's, it's just an awful lot to ask the river to clean itself.
But all, sea level is rising for, it's always been rising, it's been rising for eighteen thousand years here, it's a glacial thing. And the bays aren't getting deeper, so what happens is the bottom of the bays have also been accumulating sediment for all that time, too. That's why they don't get deeper, shallower, over even decade, millennia of, of deposition. So it doesn't surprise that there's that much stuff in the Mashpee River, especially with the wetlands that are there. But if you go out to any salt marsh in, like in Wacoit or in other side of the Cape, most of them are built on top of freshwater marshes, so is all the Wacoit marshes are built on top of freshwater marshes. So they've only been saling for about two thousand years, even though you got maybe four or five meter, no, four or five meters, sorry, four or five feet of freshwater marsh below them. So, you know, things have been rising and everything rises with them, so. But I don't think, unfortunately, I don't think, if I thought that there was even we could get a five percent increase in Mashpee River by dredging, I would probably support that project very strongly. But I, we did some modeling and stuff for the town, we worked with the town, we worked with the Waterways Commission for a whole bunch of things. And we came up that, no, we couldn't get enough, it was within the uncertainty of prediction. And I don't want to, I don't think you want to spend, you know, two hundred thousand dollars for uncertainty of prediction, right? But maybe you do, I mean, it could, you know, it's up to you, I'm not going to tell you, John, you're doing fine.
So with, um, your professional experience and your professional opinion, causes of corrective actions that we should, that you would encourage would, uh, and increasing wetland boundaries and wetland buffers be advisable in your?
I think that wetland buffers, you know, that, that hundred fifty or a hundred foot, depending on what, how you fit in the reg, buffer zone, I think is really important, especially for lakes. Uh, it, it just is, plus, just in a normal sense of trying to restore a little bit of our natural environment, it gives a refuge for wildlife and such, as long as you allow people to, if they own that buffer, to, to have a path through it. They need, that you just, you know, you want to be able to get to the dock or get to the little beach or whatever. But wetland buffers are more and more important now, in, mainly in lakes, but also in, in areas of, in, in estuaries as well. So people don't build their lawns right down to the water.
And also with protecting flood zones, um, is that encouragable to protect, I mean, they filter their natural filters?
The flood zone, or the, you mean like in a, in a river?
Yeah, flood zones, and then also piggybacking that, you know, with climate adaptation, climate change, we're trying to, um, help support and sustain habitats.
Yeah, that's true.
So, so encouraging, um, protection of existing flood zones, uh, so that, you know, areas have the capability to, to, uh, change, adapt as the sea level rises rapidly. You know, is it advisable in your professional opinion to?
Yeah, one of the, it is, I agree with that. It's also for salt marshes, you have a salt marsh that's up against a, a land like a scarp or something, but isn't armor? That, that if that isn't armor, then that system will move and adjust and everything, but if you armor it, it's one of the reasons that it's hard to get a permit to put in riprap these days, is that the system can't adjust. That marsh will just collapse, as sea level rises, the marsh moves back and it'll just collapse right into the armor and pretty soon it'd just be water right up to the rip. And that's not seen as a good thing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Ray, Ray, anyway, we'll get there, Tom, just.
I hope you're right, sooner than later. Thank you for all the years of data. Next, we have communications and correspondence. I would like to remind everyone that, uh, the Community Preservation Act has scheduled a, uh, public meeting to solicit community input on the needs, uh, the Community Preservation Committee needs your input on how Mashpee should prioritize spending these important funds. This public meeting will be held on Thursday, October sixth at six-thirty at the Mashpee Senior Center, uh, twenty-six Frank Hicks, Frank Hicks Drive. Written comments can be, um, submitted through via email to ksores@mashpema.gov. Anything else to add on that? Tom Manager?
No.
No.
Next, we have new business. Town manager, discussion relative to Bowden Road?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a situation on Bowden where there's parking on both sides of the road. And one of the problems is the fact that it's cracking some of the asphalt. And I'm gonna send some pictures around for the board to take a look at. The purposes of this discussion is to determine whether or not you want to hold a public hearing to determine whether or not you want to limit one side of the road to no parking or both sides of the road or take no action. Obviously, if you wish to take no action, then I don't need any public hearing. But I think considering what we have been told by staff and taking a look at the pictures, we probably need to take some sort of action because we do have dumpsters that are in the roadway, and we have cars all over the place. And right now, it seems to be a little chaotic. I don't know if the assistant manager wants to add anything.
No, we had discussed this prior when I was on the board, and there were issues with the parking. What happens is a lot of the big trailer trucks for one of the lumberyards there and the mariner on the other side, they park their vehicles on the side of the road waiting for them to open. And when that happens, they're sitting there with heavy loads on the pavement, cracking it and causing that.
We had stopped them parking in the front.
Right. And we also had done some roadwork. But in this case, it's it's breaking down. They're parking more and different vehicles out there. So just wanted to get an idea from the selectmen if they had any desire to look at no parking or not.
And and there's people coming in and out of that road constantly. I think, I personally think we need to do no parking. Because you have trucks going in to pick up lumber. You've got them going into the boatyard. You've got them going into the electrical places. So I think it's a hazard right now with the parking on the road.
Has police or fire, are they concerned at all?
This was brought to our attention through DPW. But like I said, we can take no action or we can take whatever action the board prefers. The only thing is, if you are going to restrict the parking, then we have to do a public hearing.
Let's do a public hearing.
Is is that a town road?
Bowden, yes.
It is a town road. So why, why can't we have the, the business owners provide parking for their vehicles on their land?
We can do whatever the board wants.
It doesn't seem fair that we should have to, the town should have to repair the road repeatedly for their, for their deliveries to be brought on and sit on our, on our land, making the travel lanes not even usable. I mean, if you have one on each side with contractors going down, it makes sense to me that they should provide parking for any deliveries on their own property.
I don't believe it's reached the point where there's not accessible travel on both lanes, but it is somewhat restricted. And there is, obviously, based on the pictures that I just showed the board, there's some damage that causes us concern to the extent that probably some action should be taken.
Are those dumpsters at the end, town road? Is that, they're sitting on a town road?
Yeah.
That itself, that doesn't make any sense.
I just think they should be able to provide their own, the parking, and not on the street. It's it's not a parking area. It's not locked off as parking. You know, I'm sure they're gonna have to, the marine is big enough to allow.
We can certainly remove anything that is on a public way, but typically, it would be posted, no parking.
Right.
And obviously, it's fair to say that the dumpsters, that's another thing altogether.
Yes.
I mean, one of the things that I, that jumps out at me is, you know, the degradation of the Cape Cod berm on the shoulder, you know, so you get in stormwater runoff, and, you know, you can see the silts and everything collecting. We must have to clean that catch basin all the time. I mean, that's gotta be an expense, so.
That is why this is in front of you.
Yeah.
I suggest we hold a public hearing and do a.
I'm not sure what the answer is. I don't know if, you know, parking.
And Mr. Chair, the basins are failing also as a result.
Sure. You know, that's one issue. As far as, you know, the road does look like it's in serious disrepair. I don't know when the last time we fixed it. You know, I don't know if parking's gonna address all the issues that we see in these pictures. But I think there's, we need to figure some, something out. And I take any recommendations of the Catholic DPW director or anyone else that has relative say over our roadways.
I'd be more than happy to have the director at the next meeting.
If you could provide recommendations.
Yes. Well, I think the recommendation is no parking.
That's the only recommendation?
Well, I don't think that's the only recommendation, but it's something that would require the public hearing.
So so are you looking for a motion to schedule a public hearing?
I would like the board to direct us to have a public hearing, if that's what you're inclined to do.
So moved.
I'll second, yeah.
Hearing a first and a second, all those in favor of holding a public hearing, do we have to schedule that?
Yes, that's within.
Ten days.
Ten days.
It'd be November seventh at this point because of town meeting and everything else we've.
So we, we frame the motion with the.
At the November seventh.
November seventh, meeting.
And we'll also let all of the folks on Bowden know.
Okay.
We'll notify them.
Okay.
So they can't say, well, I didn't know.
Right. Hearing a first and a second, Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes on that as well. All those in favor, all those were unanimous that motion passes for a public hearing to be held on November seventh, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
On that matter.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add one more thing to that. I just, I'm concerned that, I don't think we need a public hearing to tell people to take the dumpster off the town road.
No, we do not.
Okay.
I just saw those.
So I just, that's the part, okay. I just want to make sure we're on the same page with that.
You can take care of that regardless of what you do tonight.
Thank you very much.
Next item, town manager discussion relative to the harbor management committee?
Yes, we did a lot of research, and this goes way, way back. I've got harbor management plan meeting minutes. I've got a coastal resource management plan and municipal harbor plan. And for some reason, and I don't know why, is Tom Fadell still here?
He just walked out.
I have no idea, but on the cover of this report is a young lad going right across the dunes, trampling the dunes. But at any rate, the harbor management committee was formed many years ago, but it has been stagnant, and I'm looking for it to be reestablished. It did consist, back in the day, of a select board member, the harbor master, the planner, the shellfish constable, and the conservation agent. What we're looking to do, and the recommendation, is to add the DNR director, the waterways commission or committee member and a tribal member, and the shellfish commission member, so designated, which would basically follow suit with what we did have, with the exception of the assistant town planner, which we couldn't have because we no longer have an assistant town planner. That would be the recommendation. But obviously, if the board wants a different composition, then so be it. What that would give you right now is a total of nine. And we think if it's any larger than that, then it's sometimes dysfunctional.
Sure.
So that is a number that everyone is comfortable with. I, I want to just reiterate that this really has not been in existence for a long, long time. I don't think it's been active, if I'm not mistaken, is the DNR director, yes. If I'm not mistaken, it hasn't been active since the charter change. But it did exist, and we're just looking to reestablish it. And in, in reestablishing it, that would be the recommended membership. So there wouldn't be a need to necessarily advertise because essentially it's staff. And it's, it's up to the board.
I'd accept a motion to approve the composition as stated by town manager to reestablish the harbor master committee as proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a first and a second, Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, also.
Thank you. That's awesome.
That motion is unanimous and passes. Next item, we have town manager review of open meeting law complaint from Meredith Kilpatrick.
Yes, there was a complaint dated September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And I have looked at the complaint, and I have reviewed with town council. And as a result, I would say that there is no remedial action required. And I'm gonna just refer to the gist of it. In consideration of the nature of the allegation set forth in the open meeting law complaint, and for the reasons stated contained within the letter, the requests for remedial action set forth in the complaint are deemed to be unwarranted and thus are hereby declined for the specific reasons. If you need further read, then I'd be more than happy to read into the record. But essentially, it's a two-page letter that has been reviewed by town council.
I'm fine with the letter. And you need a motion to, we already took the motion.
Yeah, you, you made a motion to authorize the action. And the next complaint was essentially, well, I shouldn't go into the next one until you finish with this one. Are there any questions?
There's no action needed at this time.
There's no action needed at this particular time, given the response.
And I'm comfortable with the response if the board is. Any questions from the board?
So we just accept the, accept it, right?
Yeah. Next matter, discussion of open meeting law complaint from Mary Leclair with regard to the September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the board selectmen. This one, we do need a vote to authorize the town manager to respond to the complaint.
Essentially, it's the same elements. The response is attached. Again, that's been reviewed with town council. If you have any questions, obviously, I'm here. If not, then I would just ask for the board to affirm the contents of the letter. If you have any questions, I would certainly try to answer them.
Do you just need a motion to affirm?
Entertain a motion to respond to the letter and the time allowed to stay in compliance with the procedural process of the open law. So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Having a first and a second, roll call vote, Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that was unanimous?
Just, just pointed out, I'm not sure where you named it. Would you stay?
Do I need to recuse on that?
No.
No? Okay. I, no big deal. I just wanted to just picture over.
Oh, good catch.
You're just affirming the action that.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't want to put us in.
It requires, yes.
Additional topics, liaison reports?
I have one only. It's the, about the Christmas parade. If anybody would like to step forward and volunteer to contact the chamber. It's an outdoor parade, holiday parade.
Do you have a date on that?
Yeah, we have a date. That's right. You need to get ahold of somebody for that. I forgot. There it is.
You can get back to me on that.
Okay. It's in your packet. It's in your packet.
It's always a well-attended event. Everyone looks forward to.
Yeah, they do. Santa Claus will be there hopefully.
Anyone else have liaison reports?
No, I don't.
No. Town manager updates?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I'd like some advice and direction from the board on is, as you know, we're changing over the town seal. There is a sign out here that right now is in gold and black. So we've got two choices. We can either redo the entire sign and make the seal the colors that it is depicted in, in this sign up here that you can't see right now because of the screen. Or we could do what is currently on the old seal.
Oh, the gold and black?
Out there. And this is what it's gonna look like. So I want you to take a look at this. Obviously, replacing the whole sign is gonna be a little bit more costly, and I can get an estimate on that. If you want us to do it this way, then we don't need to discuss it any further. But if you don't like the gold and the black, then I'm gonna get an estimate for a whole new sign.
I think that might stand out better on our signs, the black background.
It's a major change.
There's no, there's no way that they could, you know, cor out the the perimeter and kind of do like an insert of just the seal and change out just that component?
Well, on the one out front, I'm not sure of that. But the two that are on the buildings, it wouldn't be able to be done.
Yeah, that, you wouldn't be able to do that. But I mean, would. I don't know if there's a way of.
They may be able to do it on that. I don't know.
We can check into that.
I can check for you.
Because it, it seems as though you could, you know, if you slice it and then cut out the, just the shape, put a new one in, dovetail it in from different points, you could, you kind of piece it back together, and it might not be as costly. It might be more. I don't, I have no idea.
I know that, David, the reason they did the black and gold is because that's what presently the colors are on all of the signs. And to try to keep it uniform is why they look.
I think the black background will look nice with the present colors. This, I'm not sure.
I think the, not that I want to end up spending more money, but I think the colored one would really look good.
Right.
Yeah, I, I do. I'm not really feeling that at all.
Yeah. Well, I, I wasn't either. But on the other hand, I'm saying.
Cost saving, cost savings perspective.
I don't want to be accused of being the big spender.
Ballpark, what do you, what do?
I haven't checked yet. I haven't checked yet.
I agree. I kind of, I like the color and the.
You like it?
As, as the way it's printed, not, not as this is drawn.
Okay. All right. So let me get some prices.
I do appreciate your conservative approach.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll check further.
Get the prices.
We got some guidance. That's all I needed. I'm good.
That was all you had for updates?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No executive session. That would brings us to adjournment. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second. First and second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.